I call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, January 24th, 2024, and we will begin. I will note for the record that all three commissioners are present in the Nat U Hill Room, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. Before we get to department updates, I just want to note that our State of the County report will be made next week, which is January 31st at 10:00 a.m., right here in the Nat U Hill Room. So I apologize for the delay. We will now, we do have an amendment to our agenda.
I'd like to move, add item L to the agenda for settlement agreement and release.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add item L, settlement and release, to our agenda. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero. Okay. With that, we will move on to our department updates, and we'll begin with Ms. Kelly.
Good morning. Just a few updates for you today. In Indiana, influenza is now noted at speed at moderate levels. There have been 13 influenza-associated deaths in Indiana since January 13. COVID wastewater concentrations have continued to see small increases, but emergency room visits have decreased. We do still have COVID and flu vaccines available. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Gibbons?
Do you still have RSV vaccine available also?
For those 60 and older, we do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly. Appreciate it. All right. Any other department updates?
Just take a few minutes here before we start off. I think Angie and I are neighbors. I see her every day for some reason or another. Just bring you a few updates on issues occurring at our facility. We've talked to you some time back about the stove and the dryer there in the facility. Those quotes are in, so we anticipate procurement of those items here in the very near future. So we're working with Angie to get that done. So we're looking forward to that. That'll be a big, big boost to the services we're able to provide a little bit more quickly and efficiently there to our residents. One thing I did, I thought would be interesting as we are moved towards this new facility, one of the things we thought, you know, obviously furniture in the facility is going to be an issue. It sounds like a minor issue, but it's not, as we all know. So Commander Gibbons was able to procure a few items as a loan out, and I can't remember this, the vendor, but I am remiss for not having that information. But we've got some, it's kind of like a propal, polyurethane furniture covered with vinyl. It's very solid, very durable. There's two bunks, if you will, that are on the floor that we've put into some of our single holding units, where there's a steel bunk that's elevated off the floor. This elevates you off the floor, but it's a one-piece unit, and all the corners are rounded, so that, you know, there's a lot less of a chance of injury. You're able to clean it much easier. It's a very non-porous service, surface. Can't get underneath it. It's fastened to the floor. So we have two of those already being used. There's a rocking chair, and it's, I've said in it, it's very, very comfortable, and it's, again, it's, I can't say anything in a jail facility is indestructible, but it's a very soundly-made piece of furniture. And then we have a couple of tables. So I just want to let you know we're, we're looking at those things now, so it's just something that, you know, we already have in our, in our quivers as we approach. And we've got a couple mattresses that we're looking at, too. For example, in our padded cell, we were unable to put mattresses in there because of, you never know what the behavior of that person may or may not be in there. But we've found some mattresses that are, that, again, they are, they are very, very toughly made, and we're experimenting with that right now, where we actually can have a mattress in there for the folks that we have in there. So just, just things that, you know, we're, we're looking at to be transparent with the public of what we're trying to accomplish in there and keep you all up to speed, too. Got lots and lots of phone calls over last week when the center was closed about the heat in the, in the jail. I'll make it very clear, we had no heat issues in the jail at all. So we were very, very grateful for that, but I want to put the public's mind to ease that actually, you know, that building is, you can't, you can't figure it out. It's, we were overly warm on a couple of those floors there. It got really hot. So I don't know if the heat got diverted or whatever, but there were no issues. So everybody can, can feel safe that nobody was, nobody was cold in the facility. As I go into this next section, I want to start this off with, you know, a truth about this, this facility. I would say at least two to three days, every morning when we come in to start that day, we are dealing with some type of infrastructure issue in that facility. It is, it is literally that pervasive. And, you know, it can be, it can be plumbing, it can be electrical, it can be actual structural issues, and I'm going to go through a few of those, and I'm not going to belabor the point. But I think it's important that we, we reinforce this, this reality that this, this building, it's not as simple. Like, if your hot water goes out in your house, you know, you replace the elements in your hot water heater. Well, it doesn't work that way. We've got, you know, probably miles of hot water lines that run through that facility from floor five to, you know, to floor one. In any place where you're having a hot water issue, that could be somewhere you can't find. So that, that brings me to exactly what happened. We had a hot water issue here, and it affected K Block, the inmate worker dorms, and the first-floor dorm. So Dave and his crew diagnosed that, and so what happened here is we replaced the mixing valves. Still no hot water, like, oh, okay. Replace the hot water controls there. It's this little cubby hole. I know exactly where it's at. It's right outside my office, actually, but no hot water. So this, this makes my point. So what we found was there was a section of piping that we found that had scaled in and had narrowed to the point that was, there wasn't hardly any water, so it affected the pressure, and by the time the water got to where it was going to be, it turned cold. So we've got it corrected, but that's the type of thing that we fight every single day in that facility. We replaced all of the kitchen valve, or kitchen faucet, all the valve stems, every one of them were leaking. So those have all been replaced over the last couple of weeks. That in turn causes leaks down below. You know, water goes down most of the time. Then we made repairs to D Block, and what had happened is the pass-through doors between blocks, with those doors opening and closing over the years, the actual blocks had become dislodged, and we had to go, we had to come up with an innovative way to shore up those doors so that the concrete blocks would, would hold true, where we could maintain separation between those blocks. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to go on and on about this, but I think we're getting the drift here, right? Shower repairs are ongoing and constant. The showers are so broken down that every time we fix them, we know it's a Band-Aid. We know it, but the water, the, the bases separate from the walls, they have to be sealed back up, then they'll separate again. There, it's just, there's no way to hold tight to them. So those are the types of things, and that's just a small list of what that facility presents to us every single day. And I'm not sitting here complaining about it, but I think it's noteworthy that we all know what we're, what we're dealing with there in terms of how the facility is affecting operations in that jail and what we've got to do every day just to keep it in front of it. And the Commissioners have been a big part of helping us do that. Dave's been a very big part of helping us do that, and Richard. So we'll continue to keep you updated as issues present themselves and as we're able to figure out how we can remedy those issues. Any questions that I can answer for any of you?
Thank you so much. Commissioner Gibbons?
It's not so much as a question, but we actually experienced some of the furniture that you're talking about on one of our trips to another jail, and we, we, I at least, I want to speak for all three of us, I at least support looking at those kinds of things. I think it would make a big difference, big difference to the attitude of people that are, are there, that are housed there. And if I recall, one of the vendors is up in Chicago, so we could, we could take a field trip pretty easily.
Sure, yeah. And, you know, I'll, I'll snap a few pictures of those and email to you, just to, just get a feel for it. In that, in those holding cells, I can't emphasize how, how helpful that bunk is as opposed to a steel bunk, because we, we have folks there that, you know, engage in self-harm sometimes. We have to have interactions with them sometime, and as you, as you know, if you're in a 10-by-10 room and you're scuffling around and there's a steel bunk sticking out from the wall and it's got a sharp corner, that, that's, that is not an optimal situation for anybody. So it's much, much safer, it's much, much more sanitary, it's movable while you anchor it, you can still move it. So those are all the kinds of things that, as we approach this new facility, that just little things that you must think about and you must visualize and you must build into your plan, and it helps to have that experience if you can do it, because some things work, some things don't. We all know that. So that's kind of what the, what the mindset is here with, with Sheriff Marte and his, his efforts to do these things.
I know that Mr. Grass has, has actually gone out and, and looked at least one or two Indiana jails. I sincerely, sincerely hope that he'll make the trip up to Columbus, Ohio, and look at the new Franklin County Jail, in part because the, the folks that helped with that, I don't want to say the exact design, but the, the things that went into it, were people with very long-term experience in a jail, and I know that that's one of the concerns that you all have as well.
Yeah, we've, we've discussed that with, with Cory, and I believe that will be a reality. The other thing we're looking into is the pony training also. I think it would be incredibly helpful. I know it was for me, and I, so I think we're going to, we're going to try to be able to send him to that sometime in the near future, too. So kind of put us all in the same thinking level that it's, it's hard to, it's hard to put all that together unless you've sat through that and, and have someone present it to you, because there were, there were things there that just, you just don't, it doesn't come to the front of your mind when you're thinking about building a new facility, how daunting it really is with all these minor details, so.
Yes. I was wondering, are you still short-staffed?
We are not.
Congratulations.
We are, we are actually fully staffed for the first time, I understand, in a long time, no since we've been here, and we have been such for about two months, and we actually have applications in queue of good, qualified applicants. And, and I have to say, I think that's a combination of many things. I, I think that, you know, the, the pay issues have been addressed some, you know, to a great extent. I think that the working conditions have been, to a great extent. I know that we're, we've, we're finishing up the, the contract with the correctional officers. That is incredibly helpful, that, you know, the Commissioners extend those, those benefits to our officers, and it's very, very important to them. So I think if you, you know, you can't point to any one single thing, but it's a, I think it's just a combination of, quite frankly, observing, caring about it, and then taking action on it. And I think that's come from many facets of, of the government, from the Commissioners to the Council, to the Sheriff, and I, I think all of those things are contributing to that. But thank you for asking, because it's, it's quite satisfying to know that you're, you're fully staffed, and it's been, it's been a long road, hard road to get there.
Well, I can't tell you how pleased I am to hear that. One of the things that I was getting at is if you were still short-staffed, all of these infrastructure problems that you deal with on a daily basis must be taking up a whole lot of time.
It, it does. And, and let me comment on fully staffed, just for a second. You're fully staffed as long as everyone comes to work.
Yeah.
When someone's sick, someone has a vacation, all of those things impact that. So now, back that up, when you're not fully staffed and you've already got two shift shortages, and now two people are sick, now you're really in trouble. So it makes it at least manageable, and that was the goal all along, and it, it's, it's helpful. I go into the jail, I get, I usually get there about 6 o'clock every morning, and I walk through that jail every single morning, so I can meet with the night shift, then I meet with the day shift, and then late, and meet with the afternoon shift before I leave. And, and you can see that it is visibly, it's visibly apparent in the corrections officers that we have that being fully staffed has had an effect on them as to how they approach their, their jobs. It's, if you're doing the work of three people, that gets pretty disheartening pretty quick. If you're, if you're able to manage on your tasks, that's helpful, so.
Well, I think everything you've had to say this morning makes it very clear that we don't want to dawdle over the new jail. This is something we want to move on carefully, but as quickly as possible.
It, it is, Commissioner, and that, that was part of why I wanted to do this update, because the truth matters here. And if, if we're not standing here presenting this, you know, sometimes, you know, the, the truth we made and, and someone's different ideas or opinions, so I, we, we all can make our own opinions about things, but let's, let's do it based on the facts, and that's all, that's all my goal is here today, is to present facts so that, that folks will know what's actually occurring in that facility and what that brings.
Thank you for all of the information and the answers to questions and comments, and I just want to point out that clearly the facility is not workable at the moment, but that it's a, it's a very fine line to walk. We have to make sure that it is functioning, yet at the same time, we cannot invest a great deal of money into major infrastructure changes because we're building a new facility. So it's, it's a difficult thing, that it may be hard for the public to fathom, that, that fine line that has to be walked, and I really appreciate the work of staff at, at the facility, in the Sheriff's Department, and of course, David Gardner and Richard Kreider, and Angie's always working on it. It's, it's a lot, and I think it's a really smart idea to try out furniture. When I was at the facility several weeks ago, David Gardner showed me some of the furniture that had been brought in, and it's great, because they want you to buy their furniture, but rather than buying all of the furniture for the new facility at once without ever seeing how it actually lives up to the wear and tear, is, is not smart. So I think this is a really smart idea, and it'll be interesting to see how, how that furniture wears.
We, when I was on the, the state police, we, we would do equipment procurements that way, and we called that wear testing, and that's exactly what it is. You want to know how it's going to function in the real environment in which it's going to be placed, because, hey, anything looks good in the catalog, but how does it, how does it work when you put it to, when you put it to the use for which it is intended? So it's all data that we're collecting that I think will be useful for us, and you're right, Commissioner. This, this whole thing for the next, how many years this is going to be, I don't know, but it's, it's a balancing act that we all got to kind of walk together, and facts, communication, collaboration, all of that plays into how we manage it and, and how we serve the public, because if, if we're not doing that, the, the whole thing falls apart.
Absolutely. Yeah. I just want to say thank you for talking about how difficult it is to keep that facility functioning. I think that we have done a disservice to ourselves in years past by not making it so public as to how difficult it is to keep it going. I think it was a disservice to our Commissioners and to our Council, because all they saw was, hey, it's, it's working, you know? Everything's, everything's working as it's supposed to, and not really realizing just how hard it is to keep it going and what has been involved in, in doing that. So I think one of the best things that you're doing to help both of our elected bodies understand the severity of the problem is bringing this to us, and it helps the public, I think, understand this is, this is not a good situation.
Well, you know, it goes back to what we are. What are we? We are public servants. So that means if we're serving the public, the public needs to know what we're doing, what we're experiencing, how we're remaining issues that their talks, their, their tax dollars are going to, to fund. And again, you, you, you show me the subject of a jail, and I'll show you a different opinion and everybody that talks about it. And, and everybody is entitled to their own opinion, everybody's entitled to their own objections, everybody's entitled to what they believe. Our job, at least, the Sheriff and I and Kyle, as it relates to the jail, is to just present facts and then let those opinions be formed however, you know, they're going to be formed, but what is so disheartening is if we don't do that, then the, the opinions are, are formed or on assumptions or inaccurate information or what they think or what they heard. And, you know, we've made that commitment to be transparent, and we've made the commitment that we will be very factual-based. We're not going to come in here and, and do the Chicken Little thing, the sky's fallen, if the sky's not falling, but we will if it is. You know, it's that simple. So I, you know, I, I hope that our body of work has demonstrated to all parties concerned that the safety and security of the facility is our top priority, and that includes the, the people that we house and the people that work in that facility. That's, that starts, that's number one, and then we, then we go from there.
Excellent.
All right.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take care.
All right. Is there any other department that has an update to share? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. We have a public comment period for items not on the agenda. Commenters are limited to three minutes per person, and we ask that you provide your name and your county of residence when you speak. You may raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, please.
Move approval of the January 10th, 2024 minutes and also minutes from the joint session of the County Council and Board of Commissioners from November 27th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, edits? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes for January 10th, 2024, and from the joint session of County Council and Board of Commissioners from November 27th, 2023, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, January 24th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Gregory joining us to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The accounts payable claims docket for today, January 24th, 2024, totals $8,112,485.12. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for January 26th, 2024 includes indirect.
We did not have payroll on our motion, but go ahead and give us the information.
I apologize.
No, no, no. It just wasn't written on our agenda.
No, it's okay. It's not on our agenda. Please go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I saw the payroll stuff, and so, yeah. Okay, yeah.
I wondered about that. Well, the payroll docket for January 26th includes indirect costs and, and direct costs for a grand total of $2,481,427.14.
All right. Thank you so much.
I'd like to amend my.
Commissioner Gibbons, would you like to amend your motion, please?
Yeah, to include payroll for January 26th, 2024.
Second.
Okay. We have amended the motion. All those in favor of amending the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero. And now on the amended motion on the claims docket and payroll. Any comments or questions from the board?
I think that we're seeing a higher-than-normal payroll, because this is the time when employees get that bump into the HSA, correct?
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on teams or come up to the podium in Nat U Hill Room. Okay. Seeing none, we'll come back to the board. All those in favor on the amended motion to approve the claims docket and payroll, claims docket, January 24th, 2024, and payroll, January 26th, 2024, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. I will note that we have received a report from the Treasurer. The report is dated December of 2023, and we will now move on to new business, please.
Move approval of Hartman &amp; Williams LLC contract, fund name, County General, general, fund number 1,000, in an amount of $390,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Gregory, would you like to tell us about this?
I would. Good morning again. First, this total of $390,000 does not include another part of the contract, which is a separate line item, the mileage, which is do not, which will not exceed $3,000 a year. So I'm hoping we could amend this total by 9,000.
I said not to exceed, correct?
Yes.
So wish to amend my motion to have it be a total amount of 390,000 plus, not to exceed of 9,000 for mileage.
Second.
Okay. Any comments, questions on the amendment from the board? All those in favor of amending the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero to make the amendment. Ms. Gregory, please continue.
Sure. Okay. This should be fairly, fairly familiar. We discussed last year. Hartman &amp; Williams is the firm we contract with to compile the Monroe County's financial statements, our GAAP statements. So this is just to extend that through the end of '26, which would go through 2022 through 2025 reports.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions from the board? Commissioner Gibbons?
It was fairly straightforward. I think one of the things I had a little trouble with until I dug deep into it was that, that the contract that goes through 2026 is to cover the 2025 financial reporting.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Yes. So this is the GAAP, the result of, of using GAAP for accounting, and it's unfunded mandate by the state of Indiana.
Yes.
Yeah, that's my comment. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of the amended motion on the Hartman &amp; Williams LLC contract signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Thank you so much. All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of Everbridge Inc. contract renewal, fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in an amount of $112,438.27 across a three-year agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and We have a motion and we have a second and Mr. Baker's joining us online, I believe. Yes, there you are. Good morning.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. So recently, at the beginning of this month, we received a contract renewal with Everbridge, which is what we use for our mass notification system. We use this to send out messaging to the public to let them know of any critical information or emergencies that's going on within the county. The current contract is set to expire on April 4th, 2024. The new contract will start on April 5th, 2024. I do want to note to the public that there will be no interruptions of service, so we will have access to send out a notification between the 4th and the 5th. The contract is a three-year agreement with Everbridge. The contract fee for the system is an annual cost of $37,479.49. Everbridge has recently made a policy change to allow awarding authorities unlimited messaging credits per contract. In the past, Monroe County was limited to approximately 4 million messaging credits. This is a good change as we can never predict the number of emergencies our county may see. Our department is happy to have this contract with Everbridge in place to help keep the Monroe County residents and safe, safe and informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Comments or questions? Commissioner Githens?
I was emailing back and forth with with Mr. Baker about this a couple times, so I really appreciate the fact that he looked into the the messaging because I had asked him what our recent history had been in terms of the contacts. But I also appreciate the fact that Mr. Baker and Ms. Nibel were on top of things with our weather situation over the last few days and so they were alerting people to possible icy conditions.
Very useful. Commissioner Jones?
This is something that's very useful to the county and I hope everyone who has not signed up for it will.
That's a good reminder, a really good reminder. Yeah, go to co.monroe.in.us and click on the megaphone in the center of the page and sign up. It's free service for residents and Ms. Nibel's also going to be adding crime alerts from IU Bloomington Police Department as well now because we had a request from some members of the public and she graciously said, yeah, we can do that. So it the service keeps getting better and better and it is life-saving, so this is worth every penny. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Everbridge Inc. contract renewal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Bloods, O'Brigger, Cooper and James service agreement for Karst Athletic Complex, fund name 2023 GO bond, fund number 4817 in an amount not to exceed $132,975.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and we have Ms. Whitmer joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. I do want to say thank you to the Commissioners for all of your support for this project. It means a lot to a lot of local kids and adults who play soccer and lacrosse and a little quidditch here and there. But before we get to talk about that, last night I was at the council meeting and the council was very interested in some finer details for the synthetic turf and they thought that it would the public would also be interested. So I brought our engineer, Andy Knutts, from Bloods, O'Brigger, Cooper, James, to discuss what we discussed last night, so you hear the same thing, too. So, Andy.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Andy Knutts with Bloods, O'Brigger, Cooper, James. I want to say thanks to the the Commissioners, thanks to Kelly, thanks to the County Council. We're really excited to get started on this project. I think it'll be, you know, a really great improvement to the facilities at Karst Farm Park. You know, a substantial part of the project is is not just the synthetic turf, but also some natural turf fields. We'll be making big improvements to fields six, seven and eight with, you know, irrigation and drainage and new lighting. So but the synthetic turf is maybe the most exciting part because that's something really new for the the county parks system. There's no synthetic turf playing fields at Karst Farm as of yet, so we're proposing to turn two of the existing fields into synthetic turf playing surface and I want to, you know, applaud Kelly and the Parks Department and the Commissioners for, you know, really pursuing the idea of using natural infill materials, which is which is kind of a a growing field within the the playing field industry, if you will, because the sort of the industry standard for a long time was to use crumb rubber infill material to provide the shock absorbency when, you know, when you hit the ground, there's like some shock absorbance with the natural or with the infill material using crumb rubber has historically been the method for doing that. But, you know, the crumb rubber, it's like little particulate rubber plastic material and that's not only, you know, it presents sort of a pollution problem with, you know, some microplastic pollution getting into the waterways, but there's also been some concerns about, you know, exposure to that material and possible health effects. So so there's been a lot of interest in the in the sports industry about about using other materials for the infill, which is like, you know, the granular material that kind of weaves in between the like grass fibers, right? So so we're going to look at using some natural infills. There's several different types of material that that are currently being used. Next week, actually, we're going to take a field trip down to Washington, Indiana, where the Washington High School just installed a new field using, I think there they're using the coconut fiber material along with a mixture of sand as the infill. And then for the shock absorbance, they have like a shock absorbent pad. It's like a foam rubber pad that goes underneath that synthetic carpet surface. So that's where you get the shock attenuation. And another great advantage of using that shock pad is that it makes conditions across the whole playing surface a lot more consistent rather than having this, you know, granular rubber stuff that can really, you know, it moves and shifts around. So you can have areas where there's high intensity play that, you know, the the infill material can really get pushed out of those kind of areas. So but having the shock pad underneath it makes it a lot more uniform over the whole field. So so, yeah, we're going to visit a field in Washington where they've got coconut fiber. We're going to visit another field in Terre Haute next week where they're using a material called Brockfill and it's like an engineered wood fiber that you mix with the sand. And so that's also, you know, another natural material and we might even look at using cork as another option. So so we're really excited to like get into the details of the design here and it's been a fun process, like working through the conceptual design and getting to this point. And we're really excited to like, you know, basically from here, the contract before you would basically get us through the, you know, the design and the construction documents through the whole bidding phase and construction, too. So so if there's any more questions about the project, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Probably say any questions?
Mine's not a question, but I've I've attended some of the meetings for the Parks Board and talked with Mr. Knutts about this even at the Fourth of July Parade last last summer.
Oh, yeah.
And I know that that you spend a lot of time out at the Karst Athletic Complex and you probably do some travel soccer, too, so you've seen things around the state.
Yeah.
At a different level than than I personally have. So I really appreciate your expertise in this.
Yeah, the synthetic turf is pretty wonderful, but I'm also very excited about the LED lighting that's being put in. I think that's going to make it save a lot of money and I assume is a higher quality of light.
Yeah, it really is. That so at fields six and seven, there's currently have the kind of old school high intensity HID, high intensity discharge, I think is what that stands for, right? HID lighting at field six and seven. There's no lights currently at field eight, but we're we're planning to like retrofit the the fields six and seven to be LED lighting, add new LED lights at fields eight and the new synthetic turf fields at 911. And, yeah, the the LED technology is a lot, it's a lot more precise, I guess, with the where the light goes on the field. They have these like for each little LED diode, they have a lens that can like pinpoint where they get the light and from, you know, up on the top of a 70-foot pole. And so the light is concentrated on the fields, but then there's very little spillover to, you know, the neighboring properties, for example, where you don't want to have that light distributed. So so, yeah, the LED is great, saves energy and it's a better lighting system overall for the players and for the community.
I appreciate that you're going to be doing a lot of research, looking at these other field components and sort of the subfloor of the field, as it were. And I do think it's important to make sure that we're doing what is most environmentally sound for our community. So I appreciate that that's in on your mind and part of the equation. And I also want to note that what I heard from some athletes in other parts of the state is that their heat can be an issue in the summer with some of the infill. So it, you know, just keeping that in mind, I think, will be useful as well because that I think that was the crumb rubber that was creating, I mean, these guys were playing football and burning their feet through their shoes, so, yeah.
Yeah, actually, that's a great point. The natural infill materials kind of across the board tend to be cooler during the summer than the crumb rubber. Like the crumb rubber absorbs a lot more heat and keeps the field hotter than than the natural infill materials. Like they tend to to retain moisture for a longer period of time and and therefore also like stay cooler on the field surface. So that's that's a great point.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
I think, too, when we talk about the environment, these fields do not need to be mowed and so we're not using gas-powered mowers to take care of these things. They won't need watering, irrigation.
Fertilizer.
Fertilizer, yeah.
Which is also another issue.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that there's a lot of benefits to this.
Absolutely. Great, great.
Now, we will have a groomer.
Yes.
We don't have to use it very often and we want to make sure everything's sanitized and and we'll take very good care of it. But what's really exciting about the one field trip we're going to Rose Holman, they have two fields right next to each other. One is this natural infill and the other one's crumb rubber. So we can see right away these two fields and they've also sent us during a 95-degree day or 90-degree day, they went out and took temperatures of both fields and the natural infill was 20 degrees less than the crumb rubber.
Yeah, I believe it. Excellent.
Are there any other questions or comments for Andy or are so he can get going on this and?
Yeah, how how soon will building start?
So we'll be, we're going to get right into the design here and the plan is to like work through design through the spring and probably get a set of plans out to bid, maybe late spring, early summer. And it's it's possible that we might actually, you know, if everything lines up right, it might be possible to get the the synthetic turf fields built by Labor Day, but I'm not going to promise that. There one manufacturer I talked to said that it might be doable. So we're going to we're going to aim for that, but it's it's also very realistic that it might be, you know, just kind of during the fall season that the synthetic turf gets built and then while that construction is going on, we're planning to get the the second bid package out, which would actually be for the, well, the first bid package would be synthetic turf facility plus all the lighting. And then the second bid package would just be like irrigation and drainage on the natural turf fields six and seven. So so that will probably that work will probably get done like next spring, a year from now, 2025.
Great. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. I'd also like to give a shout out to the Parks Board, too, for all their hard work in making this happen, as well as the staff at Parks and Recreation.
Oh, I do want to mention one other thing. Marty Hawk brought it up last night. The Park Board earmarked $30,000 per year from their non-reverting to put aside for to help replace the synthetic turf in 10 years and the shock pad in 20 years. We're also working with Cutter Soccer Organization to augment that amount. So it won't pay for all of it, but it'll get a good start for those who, you know, in 10 years will have a little chunk of money.
And and part of that money comes from the fact that we won't be using water, fertilizer, mowing, those kinds of things. So there are savings that go with that, but we do have a public.
Public comment here. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam President. Commissioners, distinguished staff, this is Christopher Emery from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, Monroe County resident and also, full disclosure, parent of a soccer child who does use Karst Park. And I just want to kind of echo some of the sentiments I talked last night. I don't want to repeat myself, but this is a county asset that we should be taking care of and this is through great leadership from the Parks Department, Ms. Whitmer, the Commissioners, the Council, the Parks Board, we're furthering that and we're doing that, at least in an environmentally friendly way that we hope that the rest of the state can can kind of take our lead from. And I want to center on the irrigation aspect, which is an issue there on those six, seven and eight fields. This is the things we should be investing in is that irrigation aspect where it's not marshy and it can be used in more days. It just benefits not just, we talked about the economic development of driving, driving groups into for tournaments, but the residents here themselves, Monroe County, people who use the facility. And this is a great, great way to invest and enhance this wonderful asset that is Karst Park from Monroe County. Thank you for your time today. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Bloods, O'Brigger, Cooper, James service agreement for Karst Athletic Complex signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval of Stop Grant Agreement for 2023, 2024. Fund name Stop Grant, fund number 8123 in an amount of $117,553.30.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and we have Ms. Hamlin joining us via Teams. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. This is our annual request for signature on the grant agreement for our Stop Grant. As I'm sure you recall, it funds 50% of the salary, the FICA and the PERF for a sex crime deputy prosecutor and a domestic violence deputy prosecutor. These two work in conjunction with the victim assistance and a part-time investigative assistance to form our Special Victims Unit. The goal of the Special Victims Unit is to more efficiently focus resources, training and staff on crimes of violence against women. I apologize for the delay. This has been pending and been tabled for months on end, but the state finally got us the contract. The contract runs from 10/1 of '23 through 9/30 of 2024.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions?
Yeah, the contract's not in our packet again.
Right.
That might be my fault.
Oh, Angie.
I I bet I did not forward it to Ms. Freeman to put in the packet.
Shall we, shall we in in honor of consistency, go ahead and continue this till next week's meeting?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I can go print it off real fast if you like it. This is an ongoing grant that they have had for years.
You know, how about that? Can we table this till the end of the meeting, make it item M? Would that be okay?
Just table it till the end of the meeting. We don't have to change the.
Yeah, but we'll make it item M, yeah.
And I'll be back.
Yeah, okay.
And you expect me to speed read, right?
Yes, yes.
It has been reviewed by county legal, if that makes you feel any better.
And it is and it is a standard contract we've seen every year.
Yes.
And it is important work. It is really important work. So if you wouldn't mind hanging out with us, I'm going to move to table this item to the the end of our meeting today. The Stop Grant Agreement, 2023, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I'll second it and then we can.
Sorry. All right. We have a second and three ayes, so we're all good. All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of 2024 Adult Protective Services Contract for Supplemental Funding. Fund name Adult Protective. Fund name, Adult Protective Services. Fund number, 9112, and then an amount of $12,534.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Hamlin.
Great, thank you very much. This is supplemental funding in addition to our regular Adult Protective Services funding that's coming through the Indiana Family Social Service Administration Division on Aging. It's a federal grant. I can tell you where the funding comes from. If you give me one second. It's coming from the Elder Justice Act and the American Rescue Plan Act, so it's ARPA funding. Um, it's in the amount of $12,534, and it is restricted, so we can't spend it on most of the things we normally do, but we can use it on training and some emergency housing. There is a correction that I caught. The fund number, I asked the auditor to create, create another fund number since this is separate, a separate stream of grant funding than our regular APS. So the fund number is 8177, if you don't mind amending that.
Okay.
In the amount of $12,534.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Githens.
I move that we change the fund number to 8177.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All right, all those in favor of amending the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to amend carries. All right, and any questions for Ms. Hamlin from Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
No, there was a typo originally that Ms. Hamlin took care of, so I appreciate that.
Yeah. All right, great. Let's see if there's any, we do appreciate the work of Adult Protective Services, very important, sadly needed component of our safety net in society. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the amended motion on the 2024 Adult Protective Services Contract for Supplemental Funding, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next item, please.
Move approval of Pinnacle Mailing Products Agreement. Fund name, County General. Fund number, 1,000, in an amount of $199.52 monthly for a 60-month lease.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and Ms. Purdy is outprinting a contract, so, Mr. Cockrell, would you like to...
I think this is a mailing contract where we're having them mail documents. I forget which, I forget what exactly a...
It's a postage meter, I think.
Postage meter. Okay, so this is the postage meter. This is a postage meter. We run mail through our postage meter. We rent the meter so that we can do that, so we can do that internally, and this is just the month, monthly amount that they bill quarterly.
Plus postage.
Yes.
And, and this is located in the courthouse, second floor, for all the departments of the courthouse to utilize.
Correct.
Excellent. Other comments, questions? Let's ask him a really tough question.
That's up to you.
No, that's all right.
It runs it through really fast.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go. You do know it.
Well, yeah, it's like 90 pieces a minute or something. I read the contract, yeah.
Very fast, very fast.
Here's one, and Dean is gonna bring more up.
Great, thank you. We just heard about the postage meter, so we're all, we're all good on that. Yeah, it's a busy morning for you.
Sorry.
That's all right. I don't think we had any other questions about it. Okay, we're good. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Pinnacle Mailing Products Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Let's go on to the next item, please.
Move approval of Community Kitchen MOU. Fund name, American Rescue Plan Act, or no, sole known as ARPA. Fund number, 8950, in an amount of $400,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, before you, as in a memorandum of understanding with the Community Kitchen, on the cover sheet it indicates that we were working on some, some of the provisions for the auditing, auditing, we, that is in what you currently have, Section 4, and so it gets, just kind of goes through the different scenarios that may fall into. I think the, the biggest one that I wasn't aware of is the Entity Annual Report E1. Community Kitchen already files those, so that, so they don't have any problems with that. We do not anticipate that they are going to get more than $750,000 in federal money, but it is only January, and if they maybe have some good luck, they may have to, so we have those, those requirements in there as well. This, they will be a sub-reception of ours, and so it also indicates that they have a three-year term where they have to make sure they, that all the documents and materials that we may need for an audit, they have to maintain for that period of time. This was appropriated last night by the, the County Council, and so what we are doing is we are reimbursing some of their expenses to free up their cash flow so that they can continue with their kitchen project.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much. Let's see if anyone has any, any questions or comments for Mr. Cockrell? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
No, I'm really pleased that we're able to do this, especially knowing that this, that part of this will help them to fund a new facility, because it reimburses them, and a facility in an area where they'll serve lower-income families, you know? And we, we've had multiple discussions about how this impacts kids, child development, things like that, and so I'm really proud that we are able to do this. It's a, it's an infrastructure addition to our community that'll be there for decades to come.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to comment that if I'm correct about the location, it's going into an area that has now become a food desert, and so this may be one of the very few places where people can actually get to, to get food.
That's a really good point. It's a really good point, yeah. Yeah, no, I, I think this is such, such a great program, and I'm so glad that they're expanding. It's sad that we need them to expand, but it's wonderful that they're expanding, and their reach is, is going to be far and wide beyond the momentary satiation of hunger. It is, it is, as Commissioner Githens points out, about keeping everyone healthy and, and really helping in terms of childhood development, so I appreciate that a ton. They do great work at Community Kitchen, so kudos to them. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Community Kitchen MOU, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Service Agreement with Susan Brackney Communications. Fund number, County General. Fund, fund name, County General. Fund number, 1,000, in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is a continuation of our agreement with Ms. Brackney. She, we had a agreement, almost exactly the same language, approved last June, July, then ran, but expired at the end of this year. This is essentially a renewal of that contract for another year, the same hourly rate, same not-to-exceed amount.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
How about, I, I feel so good about working with Ms. Brackney and the insights that she brings and the questions that I think help clarify things that we should be sharing with our community.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, it's been really a great experience being able to work with her, and I think she's kind of helped to broaden our perspective at times.
Absolutely, yeah. And to communicate what's going on in county government clearly for our residents is the key. Excellent work, and let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Susan Brackney Communications Services Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of NDOT Change Order Number Six for Hunter's Creek Road, Phases Two and Three. Fund name, 8163 Hunter's Creek Road, Phase Two and Three. Fund number, 1169, in a negative amount or savings of $488,098.67.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge, tell us about how you saved us some money.
Good morning. So we basically, when you did the contract with the contractor, you, at the end of the project, you go through all the quantities that are checked for overruns, underruns, and so at the end of this project, we were definitely underran. We should receive 20% of that amount, since 20% is our match for the project, which would result in a return to the county of $97,619.73. That will go back into the 1169 Local Road and Street Fund, which is where, what was funded for this project.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I'm just, as usual, very pleased that, to see a negative amount.
Commissioner Githens?
No, just thank you.
I appreciate your hard work on this. All right, any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Let's see, all those in favor of approving NDOT Change Order Number Six for Hunter's Creek Road, Phases Two and Three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Next item.
Move ratification of NDOT Change Order Number One for Bicentennial Pathway Project. Fund name, Bicentennial Pathway. Fund number, 8171, again in a negative amount or savings of $21,558.70.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
Good morning. We discussed this at the work session on 11024. It was approved, so we are just needing really to ratify this. It was basically a savings for changing the mix from a QAQC mix to what we call an HMA type B mix to match the remaining part of the project that was paved outside of this contract.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I have no idea what she just said, you know? I understood the words, I don't know what those different mixes are.
Oh, did you have any comment on that?
No, no, you're fine, you're fine.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
I have the same problem, but I'm not sure it's something I really need to know.
It's okay. It's basically when NDOT has their specs, they, they ask for a certain specification on their paving, which is at a QAQC level. We typically do ours at a, with a type B HMA, which is acceptable, also with NDOT projects, so it's just a, maybe a level down than what maybe would be put on an interstate or something.
Right.
Just a different specification of the paving. Yeah. Mix.
These, these roads aren't used as heavily.
Correct.
So it, yeah, makes sense.
Yeah. Absolutely. Okay, let's see, thank you for that explanation, it was actually very helpful. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of ratification of the NDOT Change Order Number One for Bicentennial Pathway Project, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Move approval of NDOT Change Order Number Six for Sample Road, Phase One. I can't believe you're going back to Phase One. Fund name, Sample Road, Phase One. Fund number, 8161, and again, a savings of $2,120.78.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
So when the project was being built at Old 37 North and Sample Road, we ended up just using a temporary signal, so we didn't have to close the road during that section of the project, and that way it could keep the traffic moving. There was some widening that we were able to eliminate during the construction, so that is what the decrease is for the maintenance of traffic.
Okay, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
Sounds like by keeping the road open, it's actually better for our residents, so thank you.
Yeah, and I really like the temporary signal. It's a, it's a smart idea, it's, it also protects our, our workers as well, so it's, it's a huge, huge benefit. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Come to the podium in Nat U Hill or raise your hand in Teams. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the NDOT Change Order Number Six for Sample Road, Phase One, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have the item L, which, Commissioner Githens, if you would make a motion, please.
Move approval of Settlement Agreement and Release. There's no fund name or fund number.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Hello?
There he is.
Good morning. I knew you were here, so I thought I saw you.
He was sitting at the back.
Oh.
I was hiding out. Yes, thank you. I'm here today for the case filed on behalf of the Commissioners against Rebecca Scott and B-Town Palits. It's an ordinance violation. We ask for two forms of relief in our complaint. Number one was injunctive relief, to have the defendants stop with the non-complying actions. The property has since been sold. It's my understanding that, in speaking to Planning, that all non-formal uses of the property, at least with respect to these defendants, has ceased. There's no need for further injunctive relief from the court. As such, we're talking about just sanctions for the ordinance violations. In speaking to both Planning, as well as Defense Counsel, I believe we've come up with potential settlement agreement to settle this claim for a fine of $800.
Thank you so much for working on this. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I just want folks to know that that fine goes just into the general fund for the county, so, yeah.
Commissioner Jones?
I don't.
Appreciate you working on this. Let's see if there's any comment on this item. Come to the podium in Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. All right, seeing none, we will come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Settlement Agreement and Release with Rebecca Scott and B-Town Palits, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, we don't have a contract.
Okay, correct. So the contract that I thought I had failed to forward is not the contract in question. And so I've asked Ms. Freeman to check with the Auditor's Office, because it was, it is my understanding, now I could be wrong, because I've clearly been wrong already. I believe this particular contract was requiring the prosecutor to sign, the auditor to sign, and then it was going to come to the Board of Commissioners. So I've asked them to check and see if the auditor has in fact signed it, because it won't come to us until that has been done. So I, so I didn't fail to send it, but, because I don't have it.
Okay.
So, sorry.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion, sorry, because I'm, ah, Ms. Hamlin, would you like to tell us more about this?
I did just scan a copy of the contract, but I'm happy to speak again to it next week if that's better for you all.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a good, a good plan, send us the contract, and I think we should hear this, just, you know, we're consistent if nothing else.
Angie, Angie is correct that the auditor does need to sign it before it will be forwarded to you all, but I did forward you a scanned copy of it so that you can review it.
Yep, that's all we need, right? We don't need the signed copy for our review, we just need a copy. So, excellent. Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Hamlin. All right, I'm gonna make a motion... All right, I'm going to make a motion that we continue the item D, Stop Grant Agreement for 2023-2024, to January 31st, Commissioners' Meeting.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Comments? We are consistent.
I do read the contracts.
It's almost like...
I know, I know.
And it's almost like Groundhog State, right? We can do that early. All right, all those in favor of continuing this item to next week's meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hamlin. Thanks for hanging in there. Sorry it didn't work out. We'll get to it.
See you again next week.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. All right.
Do you want to make a motion on an appointment?
We do. We have... I was going to say, that's finally the end of our regular items, and we do have some... We do have an appointment.
Yes, I move that we appoint Jennifer Belta to the Monroe County Women's Commission. This will be a two-year appointment that would run through January 1st of 2026.
Second.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Belton, for agreeing to serve. The Women's Commission appreciates it. The county appreciates it as well. All right, so, all those in favor of approving this appointment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, motion carries, 3-0. I want to offer a few announcements. Again, a reminder that we will be offering a report on the state of the county January 31st, right here at the Nat U Hill Room at 10:00 AM, and then our meeting will follow that. So we will make sure that that gets on the calendar on the homepage as well. There is vaccinations available at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic, 333 East Miller Drive, but also COVID tests are available at the Health Department downtown, West 7th Street, 119, and at the Health Clinic as well. We are always accepting applications for our boards and commissions. Go to www.co.mro.in.us and just type in boards and commissions in the search box, and you will see the application. And also, you can dig into what each of these great committees do to serve our community. We do have office hours six times a month via Teams, and if you'd like to speak to a commissioner, all you have to do is go to co.mro.in.us, look at the calendar, and find one of the six meetings. Just hop in there and share your ideas, your concerns, your complaints, whatever it is that's on your mind, we're happy to meet with you. And we also have a upcoming... Ah, there it is. No, that's not it. We do have... Here it is. Blood drives at Ivy Tech at Shreve Hall, 200 Daniels Way, in conjunction with the Red Cross. The next blood drive is Thursday, February 15th, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Friday, February 16th, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There is a critical blood shortage across the country at this moment, and it's very important to give if you can. And just a reminder again to sign up for the Resident Alert System for all things traffic and weather and health, and you can go to co.mro.in.us and click on the megaphone, fill out the form, and have the information sent to your phone, email, et cetera. We have a rural housing repair program that is going very well. I hear there are quite a few applicants. That's awesome. And this is for low and moderate income residents of the county outside the city of Bloomington who need some basic repairs to their home, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, carpentry, et cetera, foundation work, whatever it might be. What we're trying to do is keep people safely in their homes, and this is an ARPA-funded project. So contact your township trustee for further information. We'll note that for those living outside the city of Bloomington in Perry Township, should contact the Commissioner's Office directly, Commissioner's Office at co.mro.in.us. And is there anything else for the good of the order?
I just want to thank the townships, the trustees, for what they're doing to cooperate with this, and I hope that they'll come and share some of the stories, because what I'm hearing is pretty remarkable. And when we talk about affordable housing and a housing shortage, this maintains existing homes, it maintains them in a habitable way, and again, these are things that will be impacting our community for decades.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's true of a lot of ARPA projects, but this one is a really good one for helping to keep people in their homes and to keep them safe, as you say. And, yeah, this can be an expense that is make it or break it for a lot of families. All right, anything else? Other announcements? Okay, we do not have a work session today, and so our next meeting is January 31st, 2024. Look for that, you know, Stop Grant to come back on us again. But I will remind everyone that we are going to offer a report on the state of the county at 10:00 AM on the 31st, followed by our Commissioners' Meeting. So thank you, everyone. With that, we are adjourned.